Calling this meeting to order, clerk loudly call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
Councilwoman Depeña will not be attending. Councilmember Graziano.
Here.
Natarri.
Here.
Councilmember Rovell will not be attending. I have a word for Councilwoman Strumalo Burke. Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Belleville Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the December 19 edition of the Star Ledger of Belleville. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Belleville Federal Volcan Board. It will have these on file in this third part.
Pledge allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is remarks and welcome by Mayor Michael Melham. Good afternoon. So it's my pleasure to welcome you to the township of Belleville and to our brand new municipal chambers. We've done a lot of work here as a council as a whole for the past two years. And this is actually one project that I think we're all very proud of. But today we're here for a special reason. Today is a formal meeting. It is our council reorganization meeting, which happens every single July 1st. This one's a little more special because we actually had an election in May. So the first thing I want to do is congratulate all of the council people that ran and that were reelected. Congratulations to them all. And today we formally reorganized, even though it's about six or seven weeks after the fact. Today you will witness the swearing in of council people. Most, actually every single one of them are being re sworn in, but by law they must be sworn in for another four year term. And then you're also going to see some appointments that we make in a traditional reorganization meeting. You're going to see some appointments and some other dignitaries that are sworn in. Before I go any further, I'd like to just welcome and acknowledge our freeholder, Mr. Carlos Palmeras. I'm going to have him come forward in a few minutes, say a word. And I see in the back room, former mayor, Mr. Victor Canning. You'll be seeing him in a little bit as he swears in. Mr. Natarri. So two years ago, to the day, to the hour, we stood here when I was sworn in. And I was sworn in with two of my council colleagues. And at that meeting, after I was sworn in, I turned and I addressed the council. And I don't think that's ever been done before. I turned, I addressed the council, and I said that I was looking forward to a lot of success. I told them that it's time for the Belleville council, Belleville administration, Belleville people that are in charge to actually work together collectively and get some accomplishments under our belts. And then we could all run for reelection if that's what we decide and tout our successes and our accomplishments. And I'm glad to say that we've actually done just that. So in two years, this governing body, the people you see before us, the nameplates you see before us, this governing body collectively has had a lot of accomplishments. And I'm looking forward to not only more accomplishments, but I'm also looking forward to what we have in the pipeline. We've had a lot of success in the last two years, but a lot of that is still about to come to fruition. And in the next year, into two years, we're going to be seeing that. So again, I congratulate every single person that ran for office, that was reelected. We have our deputy, I'm going left to right here, our deputy mayor, who is no longer deputy mayor as of six minutes ago. Vinnie is somebody who's always been around. He's always around, is a huge help to not just me, but to the administration and to his council colleagues. Because like me, he's somebody who's always present in this building. I've often said it, and I'll say it again, probably for the last time, Vinnie, that Vinnie was by far one of the best deputy mayors we ever had because he dug into certain things. We've joked that he has, Councilman Graziano has big, medium sized shoes to fill. But he's going to do it because I've already seen what Councilman Graziano can do. I know he's eager, and we're going to get to him in just a minute. So Vinnie, congratulations on your reelection and thank you for all the help you gave me, the township, the administration, and being deputy mayor of the last year.
My pleasure.
Next up, Councilwoman Depeña has now joined us. We're checking her into the attendance log. Next up, we have Mr. John Natarri. He's going to be sworn in by one of our former mayors. John is also somebody that's been solid. John's been here, he actually replaced me on the council in 2004, right? So in 2004, I did not seek reelection and John took that seat. So John's been here 16 years. His leadership, his experience, his ability to actually see things differently than sometimes we do. We all have very unique traits here on the council. We bring our collective experiences here to this board. And that's something that I'm grateful for, for his experience and everything that he's done, everything he's contributed over the last year or so that I've been here. Next up, we have my running mate, my friend, my brother. Actually, he's more like a father because he's older than me. Councilman Graziano. He's here today. It's a proud moment to be, because as I mentioned two years ago, myself, Councilwoman Depeña, and Councilman Graziano were all sworn in. And we've seen the collective growth that this town has gone through. We've seen the collective successes we've had of governing body. And now to have somebody that was campaigning with us and was sworn in with us two years ago, take this next position is truly an honor. And it's something that I'm very proud and I'm grateful for the opportunity to actually be able to swear him in. Last, but certainly not least, is my dear friend, Consigliere, Mr. Steve Martino. He's also been with us for two years. He's going to be sworn into his third year. His contributions to this administration are certainly invaluable. Most people get confused when I talk about this governing body and the administration. I always view the administration as basically mayor, deputy mayor, township manager, township attorney, chief, assistant manager. So with that being said, his contributions have absolutely been felt here. We have a town attorney that now sits here and is present and is very active in the day to day operations of the township. So again, I'm grateful for that, and it's absolutely going to be my honor to be able to swear him in. I also see present, we have our township manager, Mr. Icono. Thank you for being here. And one of our deputy chiefs, Mr. Corbo. Thank you for being here. So without further ado, I did acknowledge him when he first stood up. So I'm going to just allow a few moments for our freeholder, Mr. Palmeras, to actually say a few words and greet you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if it's better if I keep this muffled on and you don't have a whole lot to hear. But I just want to echo a few things. It was a couple of years ago, Mayor actually was sworn in twice. Once here and one at a much larger celebration, so many more people could attend. And I had the pleasure of doing that. And I knew at the time, having gotten to know the mayor and Naomi and Tommy a little bit better, that the town would be in much better shape. But it really was hard to imagine how much better it is joining the ranks with Vinnie and Steve and Mr. Natarri here to make this a much better town. Over the last couple of years that I've been freeholder, two and a half years now, I've watched a lot of steady progress in Belleville and is going to continue. And Essex County is only as good as the whole of all of its 22 towns. And so we're very proud to have all of you here working together. I think the mayor did an excellent job of kind of demonstrating you need a really well rounded team to make things work. You can have stellar two or three council people, but they don't carry an entire team. I know Mr. Martino as well is a great asset to this, and he's a fellow car guy. So that makes him all right in my book. He's a very good people. And public service is sometimes an extremely ungrateful job, especially coming election time. I know, it's election time for me. I'm running unopposed and we're getting a ton of heat. And I don't think people really understand what it's like to be in public service until you fill those shoes. Everyone has a great idea, but to actually implement ideas takes a lot of work. So you can have the best mayor and council, but you need your boards, you need your commissions, you need your staff, you need relationships beyond your town, you need them on the county level, you need them on the state level, you need them on the federal level. It makes everything move much better. It gets you resources. It makes, you know, what you are trying to accomplish much more successful. So I'm very pleased to be your fifth district freeholder. Belleville has done an exceptional job of welcoming me very warmly. I am very grateful to all of you. To our reelected former deputy mayor, Cosarelli. One of the first people that I knew in Belleville. Very warm to me every time I give him a call. He always makes sure he sends me a message, hey, did you know about X, Y, and Z events? And, you know, he'll remind me of these things. And Mr. Natarri, I'm just beginning to know a little bit better. And so I definitely like what I see. Mr. Graziano here, for reasons I can't explain, is a good friend. I'm just kidding. He's a wonderful guy. And I think you need to have a sense of levity, a little sense of humor, because the day to day work can be really grinding. And nobody here gets paid a full time salary to do this. Everyone has to earn a living beyond. And so this little slice of life really winds up being beyond a full time job. I know it is for me, and I know it is for all of these members here. So I'm really proud that A, you all ran again, because you're a great people and very invaluable. And B, for all the continued success that you have had, and I know that you will have. And please always remember that you'll always have our county support behind you. We're here to help you out. We're one big family and very pleased to be here today. Thank you, Mayor.
Next up, I saw him come in a few minutes late, but we have one of our other freeholders here, Mr. Len Luciano. And before we had a very active freeholder that we have now, we used to borrow Lenny all the time. We adopted him as our freeholder. So I know he wants to just give a quick little welcome to everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me start off by congratulating everyone on the dais and those that are absent from the dais. Starting with my dear friend, former deputy mayor, Councilman Vinnie Cosarelli. Let me also congratulate Councilman Steve Ravel, who is not here, Councilwoman Marie Strumalo Burke, and behind me, Councilman Natarri, in your reelection. You know, Belleville has been like my extended family. I'm a district freeholder. I've been on the freeholder board nine years come August. But I have seen a lot of changes in Essex County, not just with county government, but local governments, and positive changes. And, you know, I think Belleville is a highlight to those positive changes. You know, you have a good mix on your governing body of folks that are veterans that have been here for a long time and folks that are new. And you have a great new town manager who I've gotten to know very well, town attorney behind me. And you're also going to have mayor standing right next to you, a great deputy mayor. And again, congratulations to you, Councilman Graziosa. You now have. You know, when you're in Belleville, Nutley or Bloomfield, like, you know, the Italian names, it's like, it's hard.
That's okay.
But, you know, you get that distinct honor and privilege now of marrying people. So, you know, I know that's something that you'll look forward to and, you know, it'll be fun. It's just, listen, it's great to be here. You have a great freeholder in Carlos Palmeras, but, you know, you're only as strong as the team. And, you know, on our freeholder board, there's nine of us. And, you know, we don't always see eye to eye. We do get along very well and we're a good team. And something that he mentioned earlier is, you know, these aren't full time positions, but they require full time responsibility. And being in town hall late at night, you know, and going to events on the weekend. And so I take my hat off to everyone who's in public service, especially in 2020. We have seen some really challenging times, and we've seen some movement that have really been moving and shaking our community. So thanks for being the glue that keeps it together. I congratulate you all. I'm glad to be here and I hope to be here in the future. So again, everyone enjoy and stay safe.
Before we move on with the rest of our meeting, we're just going to hit the pause button for one second, okay? Just give us a few seconds to organize something.
It's good?
No.
Going to have to. Going to have to reset it. It's going to have to be reset. Nor do I. Going to have to reset it.
Okay, we should be live, everybody?
My mic was off. We should be live, everybody? Just going to wait for confirmation that the feed started. Takes about 15 seconds or 30 seconds of delay. All right, so we are back live on the township website, which means I'm certain we're also live on Facebook. Apologies, the new time for the meeting start is, I guess, 12:30. So for those of you who were watching the feed, we called the meeting to order at 12. We read the sunshine notice. We did a pledge of allegiance. We were on remarks and welcome by Mayor Michael Melham. That's where we believe the feed went frozen. There were some additional remarks that were made, but no action was taken at that time. So at this point, we are going to move forward with the rest of the meeting. Next item on our agenda is the certification of the municipal election by the municipal clerk.
I do hereby certify that municipal election was held on May 12, 2020, in and for the township of Belleville for the purpose of electing four ward council members pursuant to NJSA 48-69A-1 at SEC. I do further certify that immediately following the closing of the polls of said election, a canvas of the votes indicated on statements of results submitted to me by the member of the District Board of Elections was made under my supervision and the result of said canvas, together with the canvas of mail in ballots and provisional ballots, were certified by the Essex County Board of Elections. Following named persons are herewith declared elected the four ward council members. First ward, Marie Strumalo Burke with 657 votes. Second ward, Stephen J. Ravel with 961 votes. Third ward, Vincent Cosarelli with 512 votes. And fourth ward, John J. Natarri, 595 votes. I do further certify that the above named officials are eligible to be installed to the following offices to which they have been elected on May 12, 2020, at Belleville, New Jersey, as prescribed by law.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item we have is oath of office administered to third ward council member Vincent Cosarelli by Mayor Melham. I state your name.
I, Vincent Cosarelli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I, state your name.
I, Vincent Cosarelli.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of third ward council member.
Of the office of third ward council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next swearing in will be of council member John Natarri, with the oath of office being administered by former mayor Victor Canning.
Yes, and before I go to be sworn in, I just want to say my very good friend Victor Canning is swearing me in. But I would be very honored, we need to hold the Bible. I would be very honored if Mr. Graziano, you would hold the Bible.
He's going to be right here. If you're going to go, I'm sorry, on this side. John, you're going to be on that side. Left hand there, right hand up. Just speak loudly, John.
Yeah.
Left hand up, John.
I, state your name.
I, John Natarri.
Solemnly swear that I will support.
Solemnly swear that I would support.
Constitution of the United States and the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the United States and the State of New Jersey.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I would bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
The governments established.
To the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I, state your name.
I, John Natarri.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I would faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties of.
And justly perform all duties of.
The office of fourth ward council member.
The office of fourth ward council member.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
So the next item on our agenda would be the oath of office administered to Councilman Graziano for the position of deputy mayor. Councilman. And family, please. You're here again.
Yeah, mom and dad are going to hold it this time.
So then put mom and dad on the side.
Where's mom going here?
Yeah. You're right next to me.
I'm here, okay.
You guys are going to hold this. And Tommy, you're doing right. Right hand, left hand. Right, perfect. Just speak loudly.
Sure.
I, state your name.
I, Thomas Graziano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I, state your name.
I, Thomas Graziano.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of deputy mayor.
Of the office of deputy mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right. You could get sworn in.
Yeah, yeah. They could hear, there's audio. They could hear.
They could hear it? They told you that there's audio?
They could hear it, yeah.
It's out? Yeah.
It's out, but they could hear it.
I have it muted, so.
So the next item on our agenda is the swearing in of our township attorney. And invite Mr. Martino to come down and his lovely bride to join us. You know what you're doing, right? You have to read or not?
I don't know by heart. I can listen to you.
I, state your name.
I, Stephen J. Martino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And in the State of New Jersey.
And in the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I, state your name.
I, Stephen J. Martino.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties of the office of the township attorney.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Something about running ahead.
Remarks?
So at this point of the meeting, we're at remarks by council members. We're just going to go left to right and start with council member Cosarelli.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First off, I would congratulate my council colleagues for the victory in their elections. This was an election unlike any other that we have ever experienced. I know it was an uphill battle for you guys, and I just want to say congratulations. You guys represented the town very well throughout your elections, and I thank you for that. To Councilman Graziano, Deputy Mayor Graziano now, I know you're going to do a great job. If you need any advice, don't ask me. Call Mike. I'm out, so I'll see you next year. Yep. To also, Councilwoman Depeña, I know we're not congratulating you for anything today, but I do enjoy being here with you, and I look forward to serving the county for the next couple of years also. And the same goes for the mayor. Like the mayor had said, we have made many accomplishments here in town, but I look forward to many more over the next few years with you. And I know we have a lot of good stuff planned for our town. I'd like to thank our freeholders, Luciano Palmeras for coming here. You guys always represent Belleville, even though you don't live here. We really appreciate you coming through. And finally, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for my family and friends supporting me. So my mother, thank you for always supporting me. And my girlfriend Kim, thank you for always putting me in my place where I should be. Unfortunately, my father couldn't be with us anymore, but I know he's watching today. And I know fortunately, John Natarri's mother would always be here every year. And unfortunately, she's not here, but I know she's watching, and I know she's very proud of you. So, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Depeña.
Thank you. First, congratulations to everyone, you know, that was just recently sworn in. I want to start with Tommy, my running mate. Tom, I met you with the process of running with dreams, with an election. So many things we wanted to change, and to see you there got me very emotional because I know you are a person who wants to make change, and you're not scared to ruffle some feathers. You also just get your hands dirty and work, and I appreciate that. And congratulations to John, to Vinnie. In the same way, today I was meditating on the past two years and what this has been for me. And one of the things that I thought about is like, I've learned that you have to surround yourself with people who are competent, but at the same time with people who would be able to take the time to explain everything that goes with it. And I wanted to thank the, you know, Vinnie and John for your patience throughout this process and, you know, just really guiding me and allowing me to learn and make mistakes and ask the questions. And Steve, your counsel is just incredibly comforting to me to know that, you know, everything we do, we are doing it correctly because your guidance and your counsel is unmatched. So thank you so much and congratulations to all.
Thank you. Next. Councilman Natarri.
I want to also congratulate my colleagues for being reelected this past May. And I want to congratulate Tom Graziano for being the new deputy mayor. And as I said at the last meeting, I am so happy, Tom, that your parents are here to see this. This is a very special day for your parents. I want to thank my very good friend Victor Canning for coming down today, for swearing me in. That means a lot to me, and thank you, Victor, for the years of our friendship. This has been a very strange, unpredictable year, 2020. When 2020 came in on New Year's Eve, I thought it would be a great year because 2020 means vision. Well, we certainly had a lot of no vision. COVID-19 has changed our lives. We live every day with uncertainty. Are we going to do this? Everybody's asking me now, will school open in September? And my answer is, I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow because we live with constant uncertainty. But the one thing. But the one thing, and I think a lot about why this happened, I don't know why this happened, but the one thing that I do think about and believe that hopefully this horrible experience will change our lives for the better. We've lost a lot, a lot of people. You know a lot of people personally that have died during this experience. Many of you know my doctor, Dr. Giuliano, who's a great man. He passed away during this COVID. So I just hope that through this horrible experience, we become better as people and we look at our lives differently. Mr. Graziano, you are a COVID survivor, and I'm so happy that you survived this. And my mother, at 96 years old, survived COVID in a nursing home. And I've been trying to get the Star Ledger to do a story on her because everything is negative, but a story about a 96-year-old who was on death's row, who survived and is doing very, very well. She's also gained all her weight back. So again, through this experience, I hope this brings us together as people and not the negativity. And even at our meetings, everybody's at each other. Stop and think, stop and think about what we have gone through because life is so fragile. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Melham, Councilwoman DePena, Councilman Natarri, Deputy Mayor Cazarelli for their trust in me as deputy mayor. I am honored and humbled and appreciate your support. For the past two years, this council has worked together as a team, thanks to the mayor and his outstanding leadership. I've been told I have some big shoes to fill, so Vinnie, keep your cellphone on. I will be calling. All kidding aside, I am up for the challenge. I also want to apologize to my family now because if you think you, because if you think I wasn't home over the past two years, it's about to get worse. So I'm told, so I apologize upfront. But seriously, as we continue ahead, we will take what we've learned over the last couple of years and capitalize on new opportunities. We will complete projects that are in the pipeline, beginning new ones, and confront slash combat issues that lie ahead. Lastly, congratulations to our four ward incumbents on the reelection. I look forward to continually working with you for the benefit of our township and its residents and businesses. So thank you again.
I'm gonna come back to Councilman Cazarelli.
One more thing, now that I saw him come back in the room that we all kind of left off. I was just handed a memo that says, as of last night, we have a newly elected PBA president, Officer John Hood. So I just want to recognize him, congratulations. And tell him that, congratulations, and we look forward to working with you as well.
Just got handed a memo, it's like the smoke signal. A new pope is ordained. Congratulations. Okay, so next item on our agenda is communications. Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
Yes, we do, Mayor. A letter is received from Mayor Michael A. Melham, reappointing Deputy Chief Gervord Corbell as a Class II member of the planning board and Patricia Noguero as a Class IV member of the planning board.
Next item on the agenda is ordinances, ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number one for introduction and ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Part One, Administrative Code, Section Two-Dash-Seven, Department of Health and Human Services.
I'll make a motion for introduction.
Second.
Motion made and second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for introduction and ordinance to amend Ordinance Number Three-Four-Nine-Zero, Creating Personnel Positions and Adopting Classification and Compensation Plans.
Make a motion for introduction.
Second.
Motion made, second clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is public comment.
Second.
Motion made and second to open for public commenting, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes, I'm gonna ask you, Madam Clerk, to just read our COVID disclaimer. And just to remind everybody, this is a public meeting. The public always has a right to comment. If they cannot be here in person, we've been receiving email comments for ordinances for second reading, which none are on for today, and public commenting for the public comment portion of the meeting, which is where we are now. We do have a disclaimer, I'm gonna ask the clerk to read that now.
Due to multiple executive orders declared by Governor Murphy in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the July 1st, 2020 reorganization meeting will be closed to general public. This meeting is being streamed live on the township's website, www.belvelnj.org, as well as on the township's official Facebook page. The public always has an opportunity to make public comment to the mayor municipal council during public meetings. With this new format, if you have a comment, please submit it to the township clerk at kcavalnaj.org by 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday, July 1st, 2020. The township clerk will read into the record your comments during the public portion of the meeting. Please submit your name, address, and state your comment.
Do we have public commenting?
Yes, I do. First one I have is from Camelia Von Seka. She says, Dear Bellevle Council, my name is Camelia, and I live by the Bellevle High School. I'm reaching out because over the last two council meetings, I have been frustrated with how the mayor has mischaracterized the public outrage he received both online and in real life. On June 4th, 2020, I asked the mayor a question on Twitter. My Twitter read, Mayor Melham of Bellevle, New Jersey, how are you responding to Barack Obama's challenge? You need to assess how systemic racism has plagued the Bellevle PD and make a difference in our community. Anti-racism starts at home. At the time, former President Obama had encouraged every mayor to review the use of force policies with members of their community and commit to report on planned reforms. I didn't even ask Mayor Melham to commit to any reforms or take any specific action. I asked him the bare minimum of assessing our police department. That is it, to assess, and I did it respectfully. Instead of answering my questions with dignity that his office commands, he decided to ignore my question and to dismiss my concerns. Please read this response out loud for the record. He said, Pardon, you're joking, right? Systemic racism plaguing the BPD? How dare you denigrate the fine men and women of our diverse Bellevle, New Jersey Police Department with your hateful, divisive, and ignorant accusation? My PD is not your punching bag. Move on, chow, chow. Suffice to say, his response was found lacking. I want to make it very clear, I was not accusing any specific officer of racism or even calling the BPD racist. What I did do was shed light on how systemic racism is embedded in every institution of society, specifically the Bellevle force. And that Bellevle is not immune to it, especially considering that records on police misconduct are confidential in the state of New Jersey. I believe that when it comes to how we police our community, the town should take preventative actions and not reactionary ones. We should not have to wait for someone to get hurt in order to take action. But what was really frustrating was how the mayor used the last two council meetings to dismiss my criticism he received by refusing to acknowledge the role he played in inciting the outrage online. His constant dismissal on lack of engagement with my concerns give the impression that an educated woman of color such as myself was nothing more than an internet troll. I believe this to be a deep misrepresentation of what happened. I was civil, he was not. Therefore, I demand an official apology from the mayor. His Twitter account is public. He cites his title as Bellevle Mayor in his bio, and he uses it to conduct government business. I had every right to reach out to him in that form and had every expectation for him to treat me with the same respect and professionalism he would treat any other constituent who reached out via email. For him to respond in the manner that he did by dismissing my concerns, insulting me, and trying to subject me to public humiliation was and continues to be deeply offensive. I would also like an update on the public forum on racism that the mayor, Councilwoman DePena, and Chief Menakini agreed that they would hold on the June 9th town, excuse me, council meeting. I think it's important that the council understands what the people need from their local government because don't want performative actism or symbolic gestures. We want real policy changes for Bellevle that will ensure every resident is treated equally and that those who violate our protective rights will be held accountable.
So I'll start at the end, I guess, which is probably easier. An update on the public forum, Councilwoman DePena and I, along with the police chief, have committed to that. That was discussed at our June 9th meeting. The police chief has already issued a letter and given us an update on some of the questions we've had. I know he's compiling a little more information, which might include additional data. As soon as that becomes available, I'm obviously still committed to doing that. I know the councilwoman is. I look forward to it. I've cited that a few times already. It's gonna be called a conversation with a police chief, and as soon as he has access to all the information so he could eloquently answer our questions or explain different things to the members of our general public, we're gonna schedule that. You're still good with that? Good. Yeah, so we've, I've covered this topic already a few times. Over the last two meetings, obviously. This is now meeting number three, I guess it's now gonna be said for a third time. So I don't believe that I've mischaracterized the public outrage that I received online and in real life. I know the public outrage I received online and in real life, so I can't really mischaracterize that. I know for a fact. And one day, I would love to share it with everybody, exactly the comments that I received and exactly the nature of those comments are. We might very well do that very soon. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, and you're entitled to ask me any question you want, and I'm also entitled to answer any way I want it. So I've explained to people many times before, the way I comment is usually the way people comment to me. So if my nieces send me a text message, I tend to respond to them in acronyms and emojis. If you ask me a public comment or a public question here in this governing body, I will treat it differently. If you email me, sometimes it's a little more informal. If it's on Facebook, sometimes it's a lot more informal. If it's on Twitter, with 240-character limit, it's gonna be a little different. So the way that I'm approached is traditionally the way that I respond back. And again, everybody has a right to their opinion. My opinion differed at that time. I do not believe, and I've asked this question to several people, I've read the tweet a few times, and it was read here in the record, and it was Mayor Melham of Bellevle, New Jersey, how are you responding to Barack Obama's challenge? How am I responding implies that I need to respond. You need to assess, giving me something to do. I need to assess how systemic racism has plagued past tense, has plagued present and past tense, has plagued the Bellevle PD and make a difference in our community. And I simply disagreed with that statement. That's it. What I said was, I do not believe that the Bellevle Police Department is plagued by systemic racism. I still do not believe the Bellevle Police Department is plagued by systemic racism. I also think that, and later on in the comments here, I see that what this young lady, and again, I appreciate her civic involvement, whether it's tweeting me at night, whether it's emailing me, whether it's submitting a comment today for public commenting. I appreciate the interest. I appreciate that young people are taking part in their government and taking a part in the democratic process. But again, what she said was, what I did do is shed light on how systemic racism is embedded in every institution of society. That can be your opinion. That is not my opinion. I do not believe that systemic racism is embedded in every institution in society. I disagree with that. There's, I don't know what else I could say about it. I think I was civil. I do think that because maybe people don't like the answer sometimes, they feel offended or they feel insulted. But I simply stayed at my point of view, and my point of view remains. I do not believe systemic racism plagues our Bellevle Police Department, and I do not believe that it's embedded in every institution of society. We will certainly be having forums, and as I keep saying, demands, and this is not specifically to this comment, but just in general, conversation and communication, communication and conversation. That's what leads to change, not a demand. Demands typically don't lead to change, but dialogue does, and you'll hear Councilwoman DePena often talk about this. Dialogue does, communication does, conversation does. Those are the things that lead to change, and that's how it gets done. Traditionally, a demand usually isn't really met with a reaction. Usually there has to be conversation, communication before we get to action. Madam Clerk, does anybody else?
Yes. Next one I have is from Nageli Sgual. She says, I would like to begin by apologizing for my speaking at the Black Lives Matter protest on June 6th. My statement regarding your shirt was inaccurate, and as a person of honor, I will own up to this mistake. However, at this moment, I am writing in regards to another issue that must be dealt with immediately, the removal of the Christopher Columbus statue in front of Town Hall. Myself and over 1,560 Bellevle community members very strongly feel that Columbus does not represent the diverse township of Bellevle, and that it should have absolutely no place within our town's borders. Being so diverse, many of Bellevle community members' heritage and ancestry has been plagued by Christopher Columbus, racist colonization, mass genocide, and the kidnapping and enslavement of black and brown people, kicking off the 400-year-old atrocity known as the transatlantic slave trade. The deep and vast wounds of oppression and systemic racism left by Christopher Columbus and his army of white supremacists are still felt today by Bellevle's current community members of blacks, Latinx, and Hispanic descent. As you may already know, Mayor Ross Baraka of Newark took the right step towards the racial justice in the removing of Christopher Columbus statue from Newark's Washington Park. Baraka stated, the removal of this statue should not be perceived as an insult to the Italian-American community, and that it was a statement against the barbarism, enslavement, and oppression of the explorer represents. Many other cities, towns, and states have also planted themselves on the right side of history by legally removing statues and monuments of Christopher Columbus. Christopher Columbus was a barbarian who only fosters an atmosphere of mass genocide, white supremacist imperialism, and racism. Having a statue in front of Town Hall continues to perpetuate this white supremacy and racism, even currently within our town, by literally putting a racist human and sex trafficking rapist on a pedestal. Christopher Columbus does not represent the town of Bellevle and should not have any place of recognition within its borders, and especially not at the foothold of our Town Hall. We, the taxpayers of Bellevle Township, are asking for your commitment as mayor to taking down the Christopher Columbus statue in front of Town Hall and being on the side of history that is for racial justice and against white supremacy and oppression in all of its forms, including as a statue of Christopher Columbus. Please address the steps you will be taking as our mayor in the legal removal of this statue that only serves to glorify a murderer, rapist, and human trafficker. Thank you.
Thank you. So first, I just want to say, I acknowledge and I appreciate being able to say when you're wrong. I'm somebody who's probably an expert at that. When you talk as much as I do and say as much as I say, I'm often wrong. And I have no problem usually circling back and admitting I made an error or I made a mistake. So I appreciate that, it takes a big person to do that. And again, I just want to commend, again, I appreciate everybody being involved in their government. I would have loved to see some of these names that are now involved, involved a year, two ago, or even three years ago, but I appreciate the fact that they're involved now, and they have a cause, and they're making their plight, and they're making their issue known. I appreciate that. We're not gonna get into signatures and petitions and online petitions because for every thousand petitions on one side, we can find a thousand petitions on the other side. So what does that mean? If you have 1,500 petitions, do we take down a statue? What if we have 1,500 petitions to keep a statue? So we're not really moved here by petitions, but it does begin the conversation. As I keep saying it, and I will keep saying it, because I always hear Councilwoman DePena's voice in my ear talking about acknowledging and having a conversation and dialogue, and open dialogue and communication. I think dialogue has begun. Whether there's 1,500 petitions to remove, or at this last I heard, there's about 1,200 petitions to keep, that's the dialogue that's happening in our township. You also have to put everything into perspective, right? So 50, 60, 80 years ago, this town was predominantly Irish and Italian. This was not, this statue was not placed here by this governing body? It wasn't even purchased by the township. That was purchased by an Italian club that was very prominent back 50, 60, 40 years ago, whenever it was. And it was placed here as a gift to them here because it represented the community at that time. I understand, as time changes, the community changes. We're now a 50% Hispanic community, and as a matter of fact, I'm anxiously awaiting our census results because we're probably gonna be north of that. And does that community then have a say in what happens? Does that community warrant the ability that if they come up with a monument or a statue or something to put near Town Hall or at Town Hall? Absolutely. That conversation should definitely be had, and I have no problem with that. But we have to keep things in perspective. I'm all about learning from history. I'm not about changing history because I don't agree with it. Okay, I can speak to anybody in this room, anybody watching now on Christopher Columbus. I probably know more about the man than anybody else, and I would love to have that conversation. But we're not, I'm not, at least as from my one voice, my one vote, I'm not about to change history because I disagree with it. I think we need to learn from history, and I'll leave you with this one remark. I'm a fan of politics and I'm a fan of historical figures. He's not that old, he hasn't been deceased for that long, but Nelson Mandela. He hasn't been deceased for that long, but Nelson Mandela. Nelson Mandela was the president of South Africa. He has been renowned throughout the world as a peacekeeper and as a freedom fighter and as somebody who constitutes peace. Yet, if we put a statue up to Nelson Mandela today, 50, 60 years from now, people's sentiment towards him might change. Why? Because up until 2008, the United States of America had him on a terrorist list because he got his freedom in South Africa by domestic terrorism acts, by blowing up buildings, and some people were even killed. I get it. He was doing it to overthrow his government, and he ended up on the right side of it, and he won. So therefore, we herald him as a freedom fighter and a hero and as somebody who is a peacemaker. But 50, 60 years from now, history might look at him differently. Are they going to be tearing down Nelson Mandela statues 50, 60 years from now? I don't know. I'm just here to say, I don't necessarily believe we should be changing history just because we don't believe in it. But it seems like the conversation is going to continue, and I respect and I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, anything else?
Yes. Next one is from Shatia Ford from Row Street. She says, I'm a resident of Row Street, and I'm writing to request new parking signs on the block between Holmes and Academy Streets. The old ones are completely faded and illegible. Cars have been parking on the wrong side, which prevents the street from being cleaned properly. New signs would help fix this issue and decrease the number of parking ticket disputes, which would seem to be valid considering the condition of the signs.
So, Ms. Ford, thank you for your comment. I would say that it's been read and accepted. I even saw, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, an email from the police chief saying he was already aware and on this.
Correct.
If not, we will make sure he addresses it. I'm not sure how long it'll take, if we have to order signs or just have them repaired, but thank you for your comment. It's been noted, and I think our police chief's already on it. Anybody else?
Yes. Next is Jeff Manningly, 56 Walnut Street. He states, To deliberately exclude the public from a public meeting in council chambers, of which several other official public applications are effectively being performed there regularly, it is a deliberately to circumvent our participation and voice from the government process. Your deliberate use of the pandemic to advance your political agenda illegally is just that, illegal. You have shown your contempt of New Jersey law and the taxpayers and citizens of Belville. You should step down as mayor. You are a disgrace to the office. You hold, and I wait the day when justice catches up with you.
Noted.
Next one is from Belville Allies. They state, Belville Allies are a group of Belville citizens who aim to listen to the concerns of our citizens and help individuals mobilize to make changes they want to see in our community. This week, we asked Belville citizens what they felt were pressing issues in our town. Our calls to action are a result of comments which were collected via our social media channels. Remove the Christopher Columbus statue in front of Town Hall.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, do we have a name?
Belville Allies.
That's not a human being, but we do, we just, I mean, I know you know this, but we do require a name and address. Okay, there's no way we could respond. If we wanted to respond or write someone a letter or act somehow or contact somebody based on their comments, we can't contact a nameless entity. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Newark Mayor Ross Baraka recently removed the Christopher Columbus statue from Washington Park. In his words, the removal of this statue should not be perceived as an insult to the Italian-American community. It is a statement against the barbarism, enslavement, and oppression that this explorer represents. This sentiment aligns with many of the comments from the town's last council meeting, many of which called for the removal of the statue. Belville Allies stands with the members of our community who are calling for the removal of the Christopher Columbus statue in front of City Hall. Host a Town Hall where question on racism in Belville can be addressed. At the last town council meeting, the mayor repeatedly said that if there was interest in creating a community dialogue about race and diversity in Belville, he would welcome it. Given the comments, questions that came in during last week's meetings, it is evident that there is a strong need for this dialogue to occur. In addition, the video of the closed-door meeting you held on June 18th still hasn't been released. Has the mayor, councilman, any effort to organize a forum about these topics since the last meeting? If not, why? When do you plan to address issues that affect a large subset of your constituency?
So, I can't necessarily comment directly because I don't know who submitted this. Christopher Columbus statue, I think we've already addressed that. Town Hall forum where racism can be addressed, I think we've already touched on that as well. We've already done multiple steps. Our next step is the conversation with the police chief. If that isn't enough, I think we'll hear whether or not it is or isn't enough, and if it's not enough, we'll look at some other options, but we're definitely open to it. That's it.
That is all, Mayor.
Need a motion to close public commenting?
Make a motion to close.
We have a motion made in second to close public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Next item is resolutions. We have a consent agenda. Any council member have anything to pull?
No.
No? Okay, I need a motion to move the consent agenda now.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to move the consent agenda as a whole. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Do we have any new business? Hearing none?
I just wanted to apologize. I know it's been already lengthy, but because we won't be meeting until then, I did want to mention, I've been working with Sarah Bonilla from Clara Mass on regards to public health and mental health services that can be provided specifically for parents in terms of how to speak to their children about the effects of the pandemic and just the loss